Wonderful backyard and nice red, white, and blue decorations too. And then, let's see, I also want to mention that we'll have some videotaping, but the videotaping won't be of the audience, it'll just be of the candidates. And so before we get into the candidates, I'd like to turn it over to somebody who's going to speak for a bit about the Los Altos Women's Caucus. And so please welcome Marge Bruno, former mayor of Los Altos.
It's so good to see so many of you out here today to what has now become, we like to think, the Women's Caucus, this has become a tradition in Los Altos. It's a tradition that started about four years ago, when in 2000, not four years ago, six years ago, four council cycles ago, when Jay Reid and I hosted an event for city council candidates. And we got such a good turnout and so much enthusiasm that the Women's Caucus was born. So we've been doing it every two years since then. And we've expanded it, the first one was only for Los Altos City Council candidates, and now we include school board candidates and sometimes other local offices, but always local. So who are we? We're just a group of community-minded, active women. All of us are involved in one way or another, fairly actively, in community events, either as council members, potential council members, commissioner committee members, volunteers, but very active and hands-on. And our goal is to encourage more women in the community to become equally involved. So that's what we're really after, to get more women knowledgeable and involved in community affairs. And one of the other things we do, again, to increase interest in what's going on in the city, is a couple of times a year, we sponsor a forum on some issue that seems to be important to all of us. For example, a few months ago, many of you may have been there, we sponsored a forum on affordable housing, which is, as you all know, a tremendous problem in this area, that sort of thing. So our goal today is just to help you all to become better educated, help ourselves too, on who the candidates are, learn more about them, become a little better educated about it. And we have certainly a big array of candidates that we're very happy to see. One last word, by sort of a word of explanation, is that the Women's Caucus as an organization is nonpartisan. Now, our various members have their own preferences, but that's their individual preferences. And whereas the caucus, sometimes in the past, not always, have taken a stand either on issues or have endorsed candidates, in this cycle, to this point, we have not endorsed anyone yet. And that's it. And I'll turn it over to the candidate.
First of all, we're going to have the city council candidates up. So we've got candidates, four candidates for Los Altos City Council and one for Los Altos Hills. And so if they can come take their places up here, have a seat at the table, we are going to have, the format for this will be to have them make a two-minute statement, and then we'll open it up for questions from the audience. So please come up and take your seats. Thank you.
My name is Teresa Morris, I'm running for Los Altos City Council. Sorry, my name is, okay, I'm going to get it yet. My name is Teresa Morris, I'm running for City Council in Los Altos. I'm here thankfully and gratefully to the caucus for inviting me. The reason I'm running is to bring voices into the discussion about what happens in our city. There are many residents who are saying that they don't feel that they're being heard, and so I'm running to be the voice of the people who feel they aren't being heard. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Nancy Brumau, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council. Many of you know me personally, or at least know some of the projects I've worked on over the last several years. After moving here nine years ago, I quickly became involved in my son's school, sports, and scouting activities. I went on to work on safe routes to school and led the effort for three new crosswalks which were completed last year. Traffic and safety are two of my top priorities. Next, I worked on the direct acquisition of Lincoln Park by the city, and am a strong advocate for our parks and open space. I attend our park commission meetings regularly. I'm also a strong advocate for our business community, and I'm a member of both our Chamber of Commerce and our Village Association. In 2015, I became the community lead of the First Street Green, a smart, well-designed project which would have included a downtown park. Since then, I followed every step of our downtown vision process and believe our downtown can become a community gathering place, and at the same time, be economically sustainable for our business owners. In addition, I have long been an advocate for our youth and teens. I'm not an expert, but I have one at home. My son Nicholas is a freshman at Los Altos High School, and he can verify that there's really nothing for our kids to do here. So I took a leadership role to include teens in our new community center, and after almost a year, the city finally agreed to move our teens out of the dark, dank underground and into the light, the new state-of-the-art community center which is centrally located. I have worked on and advocated for a new downtown performing arts center, and proposed a nature center located in the vacated underground of Shawt Park. I was also on the Public Arts Commission, which worked tirelessly to get the city council to include an in-lu arts fee, so that we can finally start enhancing our community with public art. I work on these projects because they're good for our community. I believe my experience and leadership in these areas and others will serve me well on the council. Thank you.
My name is Misa Flagger, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council. And that sounds very familiar to me. First, I do want to thank Pinky and the Women's Caucus for hosting the first debate forum this evening. And it's very special to me because I'm also a member of the Women's Caucus, so thank you. Over the next several years, the city council will have to make some tough decisions on big issues. And we want leaders on city council who can make these decisions and move these issues forward. Now, it's very important to know a leader's position on an issue. It's very important to know a leader's position on the issues. That's why I have my positions on the issues posted on my website, so voters understand where I stand on the issues. But equally important is whether a candidate has the right experience and leadership style to move these issues forward. I believe I am that candidate. My experience includes serving as an appointed member on the El Camino Healthcare District Board, chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, vice-chair of the Grant Writing Committee, attorney for Santa Clara County for over nine years, attorney for HP, and the mother of two young kids. All these experiences will allow me to bring a fresh perspective and voice to council. My leadership style would also be valuable. My approach is reasoned, thoughtful, and collaborative. All styles you need to have an effective city council, a legislative body, where people need to work together, listen to each other, and respect each other's opinions even when you disagree. Based on my values, my experience, and my leadership style, I believe I'm the right choice for council, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Based on the number of people here today, I'd say that the Women's Caucus has been spectacularly successful since they began six years ago. Hooray for us. Having been a native of this valley for 65 years, I've been involved with a number of women's issues, but more importantly, I've seen the valley change over that time. And I recognize that as we look forward, this valley and this city is going to have to continue to change. We have a choice to make. We can choose to be swept up in what's going on around us, or we can choose to manage the growth that surrounds us, as well as the opportunities that are in front of us for our own city, for the benefit of all of us. I spent most of my youth in Los Gatos. There's a reason I live in Los Altos and have for 40 years. I like this place better, and I want to keep it that way. In terms of looking forward, I also have to say that I bring a lot of experience that I think will be helpful as we try to work together as residents, as business communities, which I think are so important for what constitutes our quality of life, the fact that we can go to get most of the services and goods that we need right in our own community. We have to work all together to decide what kind of future we want for our city. I don't have preconceived notions. What I do have is an ability to listen. I spent the first 10 years of my life working in the federal sector as a manager. I then spent 25 years owning a management consulting business and doing consulting for business in public sector, both here and abroad. And then I owned a media company with clients in 30 countries. I know how to get people to work together, and I know how to work with people. Our residents are incredibly smart. I've learned that in the four years that I spent dealing with land use issues, first on the Downtown Buildings Committee, and then the Planning Commission. And I will bring that experience to bear, serving for you at the city council.
Can you tell us your name?
Sorry. Anita Enander.
Hi, my name is Kavita Tanca, and I want to thank the Women's Caucus for being good neighbors, because I live up in Los Altos Hills, for inviting me down here, and for being good feminists and encouraging women to run for office. My story is the story of many other immigrants in this country. I'm the daughter of a schoolteacher and a military father. They worked hard to give you the best possible life, and I came here looking to make a better life for myself. I have lived in this town for almost 13 and 14 years here. It's been a great community to raise my family. My family has enjoyed living in the peaceful environment of the hills, and a stone throw away from the Silicon Valley, and for us, it's been a great experience. As a mother of four, it's been a great place to raise a family. It's been safe and secure, and I'm now running to save these very qualities for a future generation of residents. As an attorney, I know the ethic of hard work. I can work on big issues and distill them down to the core. As a member of the Foothill D'Enza Community College Board, and as a member of the El Camino Hospital Foundation, I know that it is up to us to make our lives better, and local issues is where we can have the most impact for ourselves. For the last six years, I worked on the Los Altos Hills Planning Commission. I worked hard, I studied the town policy and town laws, I drafted town ordinances, I had a front-row seat to city government, and I know and understand what the critical issues in this town are. And I feel that I'm willing to work hard, listen to people, and do all I can to get the job done. I respectfully ask for a vote, and I hope that you'll support me, and I look forward to this journey together.
Thank you for your statements. Now we'll open it up to questions from the audience. For the candidates, for this part of the evening, you can ask questions of a particular candidate, or ask questions of candidates in a particular race. Does anybody want to start things off? Does anybody have, yes?
I'd be very interested in learning what
We can't hear.
Okay, I'll restate, I'll restate.
Okay. What all of the Los Altos candidates' positions are on Measure C.
Los Altos City Council candidates, please give your position on Measure C, and maybe say why you're taking the position you're taking.
I always am the hot seat first here. So the reason that I'm for Measure C, that I'm supporting Measure C
Could somebody give a summary of what Measure C is for people in the audience who don't know?
I may not be the best person to give a summary of what Measure C is, but I, yes, but I can give a brief, what I think is the simple distilled-down version of what Measure C is. So for me, Measure C represents the ability for residents to be able to control what happens to their lands, so be it public lands, or it is leased lands, parks. So it basically says that nobody can do anything with the lands without the residents, the majority of the residents voting as to how they're going to be used. So it means that, it's a word I use, there's no shenanigans with any of our land. So I support it. I know that there are aspects of it that may be a little cumbersome, in that we have to put things to a vote to the residents before we can make moves on certain things, but overall, I think it's a nice way for residents to know that the lands that they pay for and they take care of are available for them to be able to use and enjoy, and/or at least decide what happens with those lands. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, Measure C is a very hot topic. I am against Measure C. Measure C is something that was sold during the petition process as a "save our parks", when in fact, our parks have never been in danger. Everything in Measure C is in the fine print, so it's all about not only the sale and redesignation of land, which has never happened in Los Altos. In fact, the only thing that has happened is we have gained parkland, and I was actually part of that with Lincoln Park. But what it would do with leases, for example, any of our current city leases would have to go to a vote, and that's incredibly expensive. This initiative itself is going to cost the city $50,000 to be on the ballot. And what it would do is each time there was a lease, or any other, let's say, sale or redesignation, although that has never happened, but a lease with a performing arts center or library would have to go to a vote. And that is extremely unusual. I don't think there's a single city in the entire state that has such a restriction on it. So for example, I was talking with one of the city council members of Mountain View, and Shoreline Lake Park would not exist without a vote, and very expensive. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Like Nancy, I oppose Measure C. As a former chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I value our parks and open space here in Los Altos, and I think we should make them a priority. But Measure C goes too far. As Nancy explained, it's not just limited to parks and open spaces, it's also our public institutions buildings. We currently have leases with entities that provide critical services for our community, like the fire stations. If Measure C were to pass, this would mean we would have to go to the voters in order to renew or enter into a new lease for core service like fire services. In addition, as an attorney for HP, and previously for Santa Clara County, I understand when a measure is vague, ambiguous, and will require us to be in court every week litigating what it means. When I read Measure C, and I've done it a couple times, I don't even know what it means, and I've done similar measures. Thank you.
I am in favor of Measure C, and I have to, with all due respect, say that the people to my left are misinformed about Measure C. It is a very straightforward measure. It basically says if the city wants to privatize certain land, then it has to go to a vote. It does not have any retroactive measure. It cannot be applied to existing leases. Those leases can be renewed, it has no effect there. What it really does is put into our residents' hands the ability to decide whether or not land that we own is privatized. That's basically what it does. As for the cost of doing an election, it would be very rare. No one ever put this forward as only a parks measure. This has always been represented from the people who collected signatures as something that also affects our public land, including the maintenance facility in the middle of town and downtown. So with all due respect, we disagree.
What are your proposals for doing something about affordable housing in Los Altos?
What are your proposals for doing something about affordable housing? And so I'll ask all of the candidates?
Yeah.
Okay. And then please limit your answer to a minute. Thank you.
So as a town, like all other towns, we are required to have affordable housing. It's a state mandate now. And how Los Altos fills this requirement is although we have a one-acre minimum requirement on our lands, we are encouraging residents to build secondary dwelling units on their land. And these units are fast-tracked, they are not required to have a separate driveway, they are not required to notify neighbors, so they're fast-tracked, they're required by law, we love them, go ahead. So that's how we are fulfilling the requirement to provide low-income housing for our residents.
Our housing element provides a way for us to do this, but we're never going to meet the state numbers using the plan that's there. We need a new plan, a new approach, a new opportunity to look at how we can actually make some affordable housing available in our community beyond ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, to which my friend here just referred, as well as the requirement to include low-income housing when we build new buildings, because that's dependent on whatever a developer chooses to do. So I think we need a real rethink as a community as to how we are going to do this. I have seen, in its 40 years, the amazing growth in the cost of housing here. Nobody who moved here even 10 years ago could afford a house now. We really have to figure out how we're going to do this as a community.
Thanks. I agree with Anita. I think as a community, we're going to have to continually look for creative solutions to address affordable housing. As a city council member, I would support looking at a variety of housing options to meet this affordable housing need. This varies from, as Anita mentioned, ADUs, but also higher-density housing on El Camino. Currently, as we move forward with projects on El Camino, which I support, the only thing I would do differently as a council member is to ensure that our neighbors on Casita Way on the other neighborhoods, that their concerns and how the noise and traffic will impact them are factored into the decision. When I think of affordable housing, I think of our teachers, or seniors, or emergency responders, people who provide core services for us here in our community, who make us a community. And so I strongly support looking at different ways to have affordable housing, because again, when you look back at what makes Los Altos great, is the fact that we have this broader community.
I'm a huge proponent of affordable housing, and I do think that Los Altos can do more. We are however, a community that is almost 100% built out in terms of lots. ADUs are a huge way that we can meet our needs, allowing that, fast-tracking it, however, that's not going to provide the full solution. So we do need denser housing along El Camino Real, we need to ask our developers to provide in-lu fees, and other aspects, other ways that we can create affordable housing. Work with our school districts to create housing for teachers. I'm interested in every possible solution, I will work towards that on city council. So thank you.
This is a topic that's near and dear to my heart. I think that affordable housing is an absolute must. I think creating extremely dense housing that is all on El Camino and certain areas in the city, and imposing on the neighbors that live in those areas is not quite fair. So my suggestion is, or my goal would be as a councilperson, to get very creative. We need to be looking at where can we put some units, where can we get people to maybe even open up their homes, there may have extra bedrooms. I've been approached by people who have said, "I would rent my room to a, you know, a part of my house to a teacher." Some people have an extra wing. So I think looking at that, encouraging that, yes, I think ADUs are an important part of the discussion. The key with ADUs is to make sure they're not imposing on the neighbors that they're next to. So I think we have to be very careful about that, because we have to think, "How would we feel if something was done to us?" So one of the things that I would recommend and would do is put a committee together, and I would say, "Let's look at everything." As I go around, Santa Cruz is doing a good job with this, and I think they're a good city to model.
Yes. What is your reaction to the new vision process for Los Altos in the future?
What is your reaction to the new visioning process for Los Altos, for the Los Altos candidates? So you have a minute.
Maybe shorter than that. My reaction is that I feel like we still haven't had quite enough people involved in the conversation. So I think if we can reach out further and deeper to get more people involved in the process than we have gotten, that that would be a really beneficial way of getting our city to be more united. I think that's one of the reasons I'm running, is again, there are people who feel that they're not being heard, they're not being reached out to, and they're not being considered. I think it's a piece that's really missing in our city. So as far as bringing the city forward and making it a more vibrant place, yes, but would we do that at the cost of the people that live here and that are opposed to it if it's a majority now?
Okay, this is a subject I love. I have followed the downtown vision in every nuance of it for the last two years. We've had over 40 community engagements with the consultants. I think the results have been fantastic. There's a lot of really great ideas in the current downtown vision, which is just a guiding document, but a lot of those things that are sort of low-hanging fruit that we would love to pick up on, for example, an outdoor downtown plaza for outdoor eating, doing more complete streets which are more pedestrian and bike-friendly, having outdoor activity nodes with outdoor fire pits. There's a lot of really fun inventive things that will make our downtown more of a community gathering place, and more successful for our business owners. So I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
I also support the downtown vision plan. And I think the city has done a good job in engaging with the community and doing outreach. Like my family and many of my friends, majority of the individuals who responded to the downtown visioning survey support having more vibrancy downtown. What does this look like? More restaurants, more shops, more outside dining areas for us to congregate as a community, something that we all value here in Los Altos. But we also want to make sure as we move forward with increasing vibrancy in downtown, that we think about the charm and character we all still value in our downtown and want to see there. In the downtown visioning plan that the city council recently adopted as a guideline, there are some low-hanging fruits. And I do think even though, you know, when you look at the plan, it's really over a span of 25-plus years, and many of my friends here will say they may not even be around. But I do think over the next couple of years, the portions of the plan that we can expedite, the portions of the plan that we can implement, we should. Thank you.
I have a little bit different take on the downtown visioning process, because as a business owner, I'm very concerned whether or not we can really implement a number of these ideas without harming our downtown business community. When we talk about basically wiping out most of the parking in town and replacing it with essentially one parking garage, I'm really concerned that a community that's used to proximate parking will in fact abandon our town. This is happening at Santana Row, it's happened in Los Gatos, it's happened in Saratoga. So I think how we stage and implement the ideas that are here, no matter how meritorious, we have to be really, really careful about the unintended impacts that we may have, so that we don't get something that actually kills off what we all love about our town. As for a number of the activities that have been discussed and mentioned by three of my colleagues here, great ideas, but no idea how we're going to pay for them in a time when we have a major, more than $30 million pension deficit. So I think we have to be realistic about it as we move forward.
Let's see, I'm not, we'll take one more.
I was just wondering if each of the candidates can give us an example of a local city that they think has a good vision that they're implementing well, that we should try to emulate, or whether we're often
like to be a little bit more like Los Gatos, and not go the way of Mountain View or Palo Alto. So for me personally, I would say that I think Los Gatos does a good job, and one of the reasons they do a good job is they keep it busy within the core of their downtown, but they also manage to maintain low building heights at the edges of their town, so they don't create barriers into the town. So I would say they're doing a good job. They're busy a lot of time. People come into the town on a regular basis for dinner and for shopping.
Thank you. I can't think of a specific city. Los Altos is so unique that it's hard to compare with others. We have an amazing infrastructure, the downtown itself, the way it's laid out, the charm and the character of it is really incredible. So I think it's a matter of taking what we have and improving on that, creating an even more exciting place. We have a problem with a lot of our residents, where they'll go downtown, drop off their shoe repair, and then go off to Palo Alto or Mountain View to have dinner. What can we do to make sure that we keep our own residents here? We certainly are at ground zero of one of the most affluent communities in the world, so we should be able to support our businesses. But making it a more fun, more family-centered downtown, I think, is really important. We can do that and also sustain our businesses and improve their businesses. Thank you.
As a city, I was trying to think of what city I admire, and I don't know when they actually implemented their vision, but Carmel came to mind. I think Carmel still has the charm and character, and when you're walking down the street, you know, you have cute restaurants and shops, and it's very busy, and obviously it's very successful. But the buildings still retain that charm and character, and I don't think you notice how high the buildings are because of the articulation and the setback, and how they're able to build in strong architectural design in their lands. I can tell you I don't want Los Altos to be Palo Alto, and I don't want it to be Mountain View. Many of us chose Los Altos for a reason, and it's because we love having a downtown, but we also want to continue to preserve the charm and character. And that's why you want leaders on council who understand this balance, and will support a downtown vision plan that will promote such a balance. Thank you.
I mentioned in my opening statement that there's a reason that I live in Los Altos and not Los Gatos, but I want to talk about Los Gatos a little bit. Los Gatos dealt with an issue about 15 or 20 years ago of whether they were going to allow big-box stores. So they have an Apple Store, they have a Domas, they have Williams-Sonoma, and the city went through a lot of trauma about whether they were going to do that. I think we have to confront the same kind of question and say, "Do we want to be Carmel, which is primarily a tourist town? Do we want to be a town for our residents?" And I live here, and I think most of you live here, because we love the town for us. It's not to say we don't want some tourists to come, but we really want the town for us. And so the town needs to change to accommodate to the shift in what we're looking for, and that is away from retail, more toward experiential things, including more dining and so on. And I think we can do that. We can do that successfully. One thing Los Gatos has done very well is that they have managed their parking so that, for example, at Christmas, in the holiday season, all the employees have to park in another lot, and they get bussed basically to their office. We can do that kind of thing, too.
I think that's... We're at the point where we need to switch over now to the school board candidates, and so I want to thank all of the city council candidates for your statements and for handling all of this.